Chair DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Here.
Councilmember Fine. Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Three present.
Let me start off and turn it over to Josh. So, as you guys recall, it was just yesterday we were meeting, figuratively. And I think the sense of urgency in some of the, in one sense, almost sort of time we've lost over the past four months, you asked us that we asked to set a special meeting of the committee which meets monthly. And partly to let us do some follow-up on the staff with CARD and folks from Project for Public Spaces on context-sensitive solutions work and everything. So, we had a, I think, a very productive meeting last Friday, was it, with Nutty and I and Elizabeth Alexis, and went through some items. I think it's pretty safe to say that the staff, I feel that we're on the same page with the CARD representatives as far as how to align the process that, what's our guy from PPS's name?
Gary Toth.
Gary Toth had laid out for the council and also tried to start to work to a year-long schedule of, you know, what the year will look like, both, you know, following that process and dealing with other rail matters. So, for that reason, partly, we didn't have any new materials or an agenda particularly put together, other than the pretty cool handouts and stuff that Josh has. So, I'll turn it over to you, Josh.
Great, thank you, Jim. I'm Josh Mello, the chief transportation official with the city. I want to first start by kind of taking a step back and giving you an overview of the entire rail program. So, if you look at this master schedule here, this is our master schedule for the entire scope of work that's under what we're calling our rail program. And you can see there are nine discrete tasks. Some have already started, but the bulk of these have not begun yet. So, we'll talk a little bit more about where each one of those are as we get into our discussion. But today, we're primarily going to focus on Task Five, which is the Context-Sensitive Solutions Alternatives Analysis. This is not the entirety of the scope of work for Mount McDonald, our rail program manager, but this is one of the most important, if not the most important, task that's in their scope of work. So, another, yes, sir?
So, Gary Toth is available. He said he was standing by. Since he's standing by, maybe we should just dial him in and let him listen, if that's all right. I have him there in case we need to have questions, but I'm thinking that might as well listen to the discussion.
Do you have a phone?
Yes. And then also, I don't think we have any cards from the public on this item, but since it's kind of unstructured, I thought maybe we could talk a while, and if members of the public want to speak, we'll have them speak, because it's going to be kind of an hour-and-a-half of discussion. Sorry to interrupt you, Josh.
Did you do a one?
No.
Looks like you're just dialing local.
Good morning, Gary. David Carnahan of the Palo Alto City Clerk's office. You are joining us at our rail committee meeting.
Okay, good. Glad to join you.
Gary, this is Tom DuBois. Just thought you could listen in.
I'm sorry?
We were doing a presentation, just thought you could listen to as we go through this.
Okay.
Thanks.
You want me to begin again?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. As I was saying, this is the master schedule divided into nine discrete tasks. The committee also asked for an update on expenditures to date on this master contract. So, the eight-and-a-half-by-eleven handout is the latest invoice. And you can see we've expended 5.8 percent of the contract as of March 29th. And you can also see that a whole host of tasks in that scope of work have not begun yet, so there's actually zero expenditures to date. The primary bulk of the work to date has been supporting the rail committee, representing the city during high-speed rail meetings, and, you know, environmental analysis work, and then beginning the circulation study, which is that technical analysis that we'll talk more about as we go through. And all the work that's been done on the circulation study is just background, updating the travel demand model, collecting some traffic counts on roadways that would be relevant as we move forward on this project. So, that's where we are today. So, what we would like today is to primarily talk about what we're calling Stage One of the community engagement process. And if you turn your master schedule over, you'll see Task Five, Context-Sensitive Solutions Alternative Analysis, Stage One schedule. And what's highlighted in blue is what we are calling Stage One. So, we would like to move forward with establishing the program background and then beginning the discussion around problem definition and creating an evaluation framework that would be used to evaluate alternatives. So, we would first establish the problem and delve a little more deeper into what the actual issues are around our existing grade crossings, and then, you know, the future conditions with additional trains, as well as additional regional and local growth that may occur. So, what we are proposing today is to have a community workshop in May. This would be an all-day Saturday community forum at the Mitchell Park Community Center, ideally. And the morning would consist of a presentation by CARD, perhaps the Palo Alto History Society, as well as Gary from PPS, basically giving everyone an overview of our existing conditions, how the grade crossings are currently working, a little bit of history around the railroad. CARD would assist in bringing everybody up to speed on all the work that's been done to date around planning and engineering and feasibility analysis. We would also discuss what other communities are doing with their grade separation. So, the morning would be focused around the program background. And then we would break and come back in the afternoon, and we would start on the problem definition phase. And this would be a very objective look at what's actually happening today and what's projected to occur in the future with the additional trains and regional and local growth and other changes in demographics and land use and railroad capacity. So, that would set kind of the bounds for what problem we're trying to solve. And then, you know, at the very end of the all-day forum, we would focus on defining some evaluation criteria. So, first, we set the problem, and then we look at how we would evaluate success. So, how do we solve, how do we recognize that we're addressing the problem? That is the goal of the first workshop, as we proposed. And then we would come back to the rail committee and potentially city council and have, ideally get approval of both the problem definition and the evaluation criteria. And then we would move into Stage Two, and we would have a similar discussion about what Stage Two looks like. So, if we, you know, receive that direction to move forward with the community workshop today, we would spend the bulk of the next month getting, you know, the word out there about this forum, getting people to RSVP, strategically targeting people in the community that we want to attend this forum, and also working with Gary Toth at PPS, CARD, Circle Point, Mount McDonald, to develop the agenda for the meeting, the forum, and then also program the forum with topics that we would think would be interesting to people and draw out a large number of community folks. And then lastly, in your handout, we have what we're calling the Context-Sensitive Solutions Alternatives Analysis Project Context. Last meeting, there was a lot of talk about why we're doing this, what is the framework that we're going to operate under as we move forward. This is not intended to be static. This will probably, you know, evolve into the problem definition and something much more detailed as we move into the context-sensitive solutions process. However, this is intended to give us all a general understanding of what we are doing and why we are doing it. So, I'll read it very briefly. It's the Palo Alto Rail Program Context-Sensitive Solutions Alternatives Analysis is a community-driven process to identify feasible infrastructure projects that will improve the east-west circulation across the railroad corridor for all modes of transportation and address any current and projected safety issues at the existing railroad grade crossings in the city of Palo Alto. This is intended to just give us a framework to operate in as we move into that community workshop one, before we have a true problem definition, which will come from Stage One of the context-sensitive solutions process. So, with that, I'd conclude my presentation, and I think we are just beginning the discussion.
Try different topics?
Oh, which topic? I was going to talk about the budget.
Okay, let's start there.
I was sort of, so, you know, I guess the question is, is that how are we going to, it's a, this is a big number, this is like a million five. So, how are, how are we going to have some sense of how the money's being spent on it? And that, are you guys going to do the oversight and report to us? You know, and I guess I want some sense of, you know, going to the high-speed rail meetings, you know, is one person going, is three people going, is four people going? How many people from Hatchmont-McDonald are at this meeting? Why is everyone here? I guess I just want to have a sense that we're doing this efficiently and that we're not spending a lot of money on meetings and attending meetings and stuff like that when, and maybe they're really useful, I'm not saying they're not, I'm just, I just want some sense of, it seems like a huge amount of money, and I'm not sure we're, I'm not sure we're focused on how it's being spent and that we're getting a huge bang for our buck on this. I guess that's my concern.
So, you know, when this contract was executed and we gave the notice to proceed, the limited notice to proceed on a couple of the tasks, we established that this would be a task-by-task contract. So, they are not to begin work on any of the tasks that you see listed as zero percent until we give the notice to proceed. We didn't want this to be, you know, a runaway train where there's just, you know, a lot of, we can't monitor closely the work that's occurring under each of the tasks. And I've actually already had to, you know, monitor the burn rate a little bit on a couple of the tasks, and the goal is to have each of the tasks, you know, stretch out the full length of the contract or the length of the task according to the schedule and not run out of money before that time period is over. So, I'm monitoring the burn rate. The goal would not, would be to not have to execute any change orders or add any additional funding to this and be able to complete this.
So, is it like a time and materials contract?
Yes.
Or is it more like, so it's not like this is your task, you guys figure out, you know, basically how, we expect that to be done at the end of it?
Yeah, it's time and materials. The meeting coverage, you know, they've, they've spent a little more time upfront attending meetings to get up to speed on LPMG and prepare materials for the rail committee. But I think moving forward, we'll be a lot more strategic about which meetings staff covers and which meetings the consultant covers. But kicking off the program, we wanted them to be completely up to speed on everything that, you know, before we came to the first rail committee. But, you know, Task One, support the rail committee, each meeting that we add, or if we don't make a decision that we're expecting to make at the rail committee according to the schedule, it is going to add additional tasks to that, additional costs to that Task One.
Not if they don't come?
Yeah, if they don't come, we can start being more strategic about when they attend the rail committee meetings.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I'm not sure it's necessary. And how many people are from Hatchmont-McDonald here?
Three.
I mean, I'm not sure we need three people. I mean, you can explain to me why we do, but maybe it's necessary. I'm just not sure why it would be. So, I think we need to be more strategic on that, that's my concern. And if someone could just go through these tasks and explain to me what that means, support council rail committee, convene rail technical group, what do you, like, what are we, what are we trying to achieve here? What's the deliverables at the end of the day? What am I getting for the money?
So, support rail, council rail committee is prepare staff reports and attend, you know, 24, up to 24 rail committee meetings during the two-year period of the contract. Convene rail technical group, this is now looking like it'll be rolled into the context-sensitive solutions process, and that rail technical group will be the context-sensitive solutions rail, sorry, technical advisory committee. That is a committee that would likely meet monthly or, you know, more than monthly during the context-sensitive solutions alternatives analysis phase to help guide the process on technical issues around railroad design, utilities, those kind of things. Represent city during CHSR environmental analysis phase. This is, would help us draft letters to the High-Speed Rail Authority, interact with them around the scoping and the EIR study, and basically advocate on our behalf and prepare technical analysis to rebut anything that we might not agree with in the environmental analysis as it moves forward. The rail corridor circulation study, this is a technical analysis looking at the city as a whole, and if we were to close a grade crossing or add a new grade crossing or grade separate to, what does that do to traffic for all modes? What does it do for congestion, both, you know, currently in today and in the future? So, that's kind of a high-level macro analysis of the traffic and circulation impacts of various scenarios. And that's mostly a technical. Task Five, you're pretty familiar with, that's a context-sensitive solutions alternative analysis. At the end of that, we will have an identified alternative for each of the four grade crossings. You know, we may come, end up somewhere.
But what are they going to do for $400,000 in that?
It's mainly community engagement, having the community conversation. The bulk of that task is community engagement.
But what does that mean?
It would be time and material, so we would, you know, we're scoping that today. We're having the discussion around what the first stage of that looks like.
But when we said $400,000, how did you break it out? What did you, what did you anticipate that to be for $400,000?
So, that's in the handout from last meeting, and we can give that back to you. That includes the full scope of the work. It was a whole series of public meetings, outreach, mailers, facilitation of those meetings, and then the alternatives analysis itself, which is a technical exercise.
Isn't the alternatives analysis the $200,000 for the, isn't that separate? That's the rail corridor circulation study?
No, no, the circulation study is a, is a high-level macro look at different scenarios.
What's the difference then?
So, the, the circulation study was intended to be kind of the first phase, where we look at if we closed, this is just very hypothetical, if we closed Crossing A and widened Crossing B, what does that do to the city's circulation network? If we, it's not looking at whether it's a overcrossing or undercrossing, it's just looking.
So, it's the circulation, the traffic impacts?
Yes, yes.
Like, if we close this one, or what does that look like? Will it be like if we work on, if we work on Charleston and Charleston's closed while we work on it, what's that going to do in the meantime to Meadow? Is that?
Yes, exactly. Or if Meadow became bike-ped only, does that then make Charleston unusable because it's congested? And then task of deliverables.
Let me just jump in for a second. I mean, you know, so, the first three tasks, I don't want to oversimplify this or strike me as kind of soft services and that do have some flexibility, and we have some roles in, you know, how many meetings there are, how many, how many things that we, whoever's going to go, whether it's staff, committee members, the public, or our consultants. The circulation study is obviously a technical analysis that we need outside expertise for. Task Five, again, on the alternatives analysis, I mean, that really is through this whole process here that says, which wants to get, arrive at this endpoint here, where we have identified the preferred alternative for how we're going to have deal with rail crossings issues here in the, in the city. And so, I mean, in many ways, that's sort of the biggest goal we've got here, I see, as it relates to the, this is to ultimately arrive at that. And then the subsequent tasks start to deal with some of the requirements that obviously we have. We've got to have some degree of, of plan design specifically, and then the environmental review that will have to go along with that, that they're helping with. But I, I would like to say, I think that the mayor's question is a good one, and in one sense, I think it's even larger than just Hatchmont-McDonald. I mean, in one sense, what you're asking us is, we have a big task here as it relates to what we want to do on the rail crossings. We other have, we also have other related kind of rail issues that come up sometimes from time to time. We've got this whole issue about the high-speed rail scoping meetings. And, you know, and we have incoming, coming in from the community, the council also all the time during the process, separate from, you know, how we design anything. So, our ability to focus and stay focused is going to be important from, from both a financial point of view, but from a time point of view. And I think that's a larger conversation that also gets to, you know, how do we make decisions about even how do we deploy our staff? That we could get requests to go to lots of other meetings that pull us off of the focus on the alternatives analysis, and there may be other alternatives we want to pursue. I mean, it may be there's discussion that says either committee members or some community members in one sense are the ones who go to some of those things, and the staff isn't even involved necessarily. I mean, I think we need to talk about, why do we need a consultant really at times? Why do we really need the staff? You know, I just think it's going to be really important, because I don't think, I think your question's going to, I mean, it's come up every month, all the way through this process, both as a matter of money, but also a matter of, of us focusing and how are we going to get this, how are we going to maybe meet this schedule as it's identified?
Okay, so that was really, I think you encapsulated what I was saying. It's this general unease about, do we have a plan? Are we spending the money wisely? Is there oversight? I just don't have that comfort level yet.
Yeah, I would echo like some of the comments on meetings, you know, love you guys, but I'm not sure how many we need to come. And a little, was a little concerning, I saw 23 percent of the support money is already spent. The, the other part that's not clear to me is if we involve Gary Toth, you know, where are those hours? How many of those hours? And, you know, do we take that out of the $400,000 for the CSS piece?
So, Gary Toth's recent trip here, his travel costs and his time was billed under additional tasks and meetings.
Okay.
We can talk about whether we want to re-scope the Task Five to include his work.
I think it'd be good, maybe to have a discussion if, and I don't know if staff has an idea, if he were to be involved, you know, would we do it 40 hours, 100 hours? Just kind of some idea of level of involvement and how we would budget for that.
I think we've assumed he would help us prepare for all the community workshops. He would also serve as a sounding board when we reach critical decision points. We could go back to him and get some advice. I would say, you know, maybe a handful of hours per month moving through the process.
So, I think we can identify that in more detail for the, for the meeting. I mean, I think obviously, we want to have enough clarity with what the, what the expectation is, but then, on the other hand, we need to then have Josh as the ultimate project manager be able to manage that project too. I mean, so that he's the one accountable for when Gary Toth gets engaged and, actually on any of the, any of these things. I don't want to have a council member even run into someone from Hatchmont-McDonald and say, hey, we're having a meeting, why don't you guys come? And all of a sudden, you know, they think, oh, good, the council wanted us to come, and that was just an off comment. I mean, I just think we, I think you're being really clear about.
The other one that jumps out at me is the financing plans. And so, the question, that seems like a small amount of money, and it's not really on the timeline, and it's clear we're going to need more, more funding. So, does that, does that mean that staff is primarily focused on that, since there's very little in the consulting agreement? And when, when would we start, you know, in terms of on the schedule?
I think the financing will be part of the discussion all along, and this will be an iterative financing plan, because as we look at different alternatives, we're going to have to think about how we would finance those. So, I think at the end of the day, when we have an identified alternative, we'll have some structure around how we would seek funding for that with local, state, and potentially federal funding.
Yeah, I mean, it's a huge part of it, and, you know, I'd love to see us submitting even this work for Measure B money, so we could get some of this planning work paid for. I mean, is that possible to?
We're in, in discussion with VTA around how the planning money that they want to allocate over the first two years would be distributed.
Sign the contract beforehand, does that disqualify us?
We haven't gotten to that point of the discussion yet, but that is on our radar, and that's something we would also like to do, is recoup some of this cost with Measure B.
Okay. Any other comments on the budget itself?
Yes, so, I would just make the comment, I think we need to be judicious about who is running the CSS process. Is it HMM? Is it Gary Toth? I guess we're leaving that to your judgment to some degree, but there's a, there's both a financial cost and there's kind of the effectiveness cost, who is best positioned? And then, like the mayor, I am a little worried here about $400,000 for community outreach. Is that just our going rate in Palo Alto for these kind of things?
I mean, we scoped a pretty robust community engagement process, given this could potentially be the biggest project that the city's done. So, again, though, it is a time and materials contract, so if they don't spend that, they can't bill, you know, if they're not actually spending the hours on project, you know, on the work that we direct them to complete, they won't bill us for it.
Okay.
Hey, guys, it's Gary. Wonder if I could chime in? Sure. I would think it's important for the city of Palo Alto to be viewed as running the process.
Right.
And then all the consultants assembling, extension of your staff.
Right. This is Jim Keen, the city manager. I agree with that. I mean, I agree, absolutely. And the truth is, we actually do know how to run these processes and design these processes, you know? And in some of these cases, we need assistance, and, and sometimes we just need cover, you know, that it's not just us who is speaking as the staff. It's good to have somebody from outside. I personally think it's good to identify a robust dollar amount, but I also think that we, we really need to commit to you that we are carefully managing it, even to the point that, you know, we don't just automatically say, oh, yeah, well, let's have another meeting or let's do another one of these kind of events or something, even if one of you guys say it, that we're thinking about, is it really necessary? Is it really effective? Do we need, what, to what extent do we need the outside assistance versus something we can do ourselves?
So, I did bring the report from last week, just so everybody's aware, the delivery, deliveries on the CSS process were an engagement plan, a contact and inquiry database collateral, including, you know, web, webpage, two surveys, and then six community meetings and six project mailings and a summary report. And so, I know this was done a long time ago. On your, on your new plan, you have four community meetings instead of six. So, does that, again, does that mean that there, there's some funds maybe where we could get PPS more involved and shift some of those dollars around? It might be good to kind of maybe an update on the community engagement piece based on where we are now.
Yeah, I'm trying to separate, I mean, I do appreciate the council and the committee's oversight concern. I guess I think we also, we need to think about how we, how we set up the contract management piece of this work that I think really has to stay with the staff, or it's not going to be effective. But then, the parameters or that you want to see established in some way, and then, you know, how it is that we, I think what we have to be able to check in with you is, you know, are we on the right track as far as the progress with the community or on the project itself? And to be able to account for what we've spent, and then when you either ask for other things or we say we're going to do other things, there's a kind of transparency about what we're going to do, and there's this opportunity to say, well, wait a minute, do we really need to do that? You know, but I, I mean, I think right now, clearly, there was a concept about what the funds could be used for. I don't see that we're under any obligation to stick with that, and we can adapt that as, as time goes on. as time goes on. So even right now, the idea of we're going to say we're going to have four workshops, those are, even that's a conceptual sort of thing, and we may end up adjusting that, right?
Well, so let's talk about the process, because we did get it scheduled here, so I assume this is the plan. I'd really like to understand the idea, the technical advisory committee and the workshops. I heard Josh just say that TAC could meet monthly or more frequently than monthly, but you show quarterly meetings on the schedule. So, you know, which is it, I guess, and how do you see that really working?
The TAC is going to need to meet when there are technical decisions that need to be made throughout the process. So as the alternatives start to congeal, we're going to have to sit down and, you know, discuss the feasibility from a technical standpoint, a rail design, a utility standpoint, a roadway operational standpoint, and also the finance, the likelihood of financing the different alternatives. So the technical, you know, we're doing our best guess to estimate what, you know, when we're going to need them, but in reality, they're going to have to convene when there are decisions to be made around technical aspects.
Is this including Caltrain?
Yes.
So don't we need to have a schedule and let people know if it's going to be monthly or more frequently?
So that is the next stage. Today, we're just asking to move forward with Stage One, which is on the back of the master schedule. You can see, we begin the discussion of the TAC during Stage One. So once we begin Stage One, we would then begin that discussion around when the TAC meets, who's on the TAC. We have not begun Stage One yet. We're here today asking to move forward with that.
So I'm a little, again, I'd like to understand, the community workshop piece versus a technical advisory committee versus a citizens advisory committee, and this is a complicated issue. How are we going to have residents kind of engage and understand the issue over the length of the project? Is CSS in this vision here to be really done with the TAC as for, you know, cohesion and consistency and understanding? I mean, I saw us do a bunch of workshops originally for the comp plan, and, you know, ultimately, I don't think it worked very well, and we ended up going back and doing it over with the CAC. And so I'm really skeptical about the workshops. And I'd like to hear what you guys, why you guys are going that direction.
Well, I think one of the things we could ultimately get to as a city is getting clarity about why we actually use a citizens advisory, or a task force, let's say, versus other modes, because clearly, I mean, they're effective in different ways. I mean, the council's best able to speak to why you think the CAC was necessary for the comp plan. I mean, communities can't have done this without citizens advisory committee. Councils have been able to just wade in and make decisions without that component, but that's part of our DNA, I guess, here in a sense. I think the basic thinking here is, is there are a couple of things, which is, even a citizens advisory committee limits the exposure to a small subset of the community. So is the right sort of design and engagement in ongoing community workshops has the opportunity to both inform, educate, and explore with more people? And if there's enough communication and follow-up back in the course that links those different meetings, you arguably could say you've engaged more of the community than just a representative subset. And secondly, I think it allows the city to kind of collect the results from each one of those workshops and to look at, I mean, I think the rail committee has to play a key role in sort of helping steer some of these things as we come back and report to you where we are. The technical committee, I still think, is technical, and it's going to be making recommendations, but it's not going to make decisions. Ultimately, you guys are going to be the ones who are going to have to make the decisions that will ultimately go to the council. But I think that we can reach, I mean, I think we need to get clear is, why do we have to have a community engagement process at all, rather than you guys just making decisions about what you want, really?
I think that's really clear. You don't think that's clear?
Well, I think it's, we think it's clear, but if we express, are we trying to get as many people aware of what the alternatives are and the implications of them, and then get enough feedback so that the council makes the best possible selections? I mean, I think that's the main reason. And I personally think that well-designed, large community workshops reach more people than a citizens advisory committee, which in many ways just relies on the local media on sort of reporting what's going on. And I think you have the ability to, we have the ability to do more communication, actually, with the right designed workshops. I'd be curious what Gary has to say.
Gary, you're up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just had to unmute myself here. I think we're getting a little too focused in on the citizens advisory committee or not, as opposed to laying out a process that accomplishes a lot of, I guess that was Jim just talking, what Jim just said. We talked about this in past meetings, right, circle of engagement, telescoping up and down. And yes, these broad community meetings and online outreach and other things that you can do will ensure that you reach a larger cross-section of your folks. But then there's a point at which, how do you actually engage your citizens in the decision-making process? Not that they're going to make the decision, but they're going to, we're going to participate in the decision-making process. And that's where I think you have to figure out some structure for, you know, representative democracy, right? And that could be through the technical advisory committee, you know? You could invent a way to, if and when it becomes required, to share that decision-making with the larger group. It could be through CARD or Friends of Caltrain or some other organization you have there. So I think, sound like you're asking McDonald and Circle Point to suggest some kind of framework. So I think you should sort of lay that out, and then if there's a separate committee other than the TAC, then call it whatever you want, a task force. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I don't know how you have four or five, just since we have four or five big meetings and 300 people turn up, and then, you know, you reach a decision, you know, I still think there needs to be some sort of connection there. Yeah.
So I just want to say, I think that's why the, not just the pre-design, but the post-community workshop piece is really important. How do we organize and collect and express and design the right follow-ups between that and the next workshop? So if you just sort of say, have a workshop, and then that's it, wasn't that great? And then we have another one, you lose the, what you're trying to build, whether it's through a citizens advisory committee over time, is a kind of narrative that is expressed that helps describe what the problem is and what people see as the proposed solutions. That's like, you know, it's a little bit easier with the, I don't want to say easier with, something like the comp plan that has its existing structure in the plan itself with policies, program, goals, and you have people ultimately populating those with recommendations. And I think we need to put some structure to what we roughly think we're trying to get here as a result of the alternatives analysis, so that the things people say start to be expressed coherently in the same way. Do you know what I mean? As opposed to just sort of a mishmash of sort of feedback.
Let me build on that. In addition to the narrative, I think you need to ensure a continuity of the conversation throughout the community, right? And you're going to have to, if you're just going to have these public meetings, you're going to, I'm not, I'm not aware of another way to ensure that continuity of conversation.
Eric, have a question.
Yeah, I, listen, I think, I think this is actually a fairly important discussion, since some of these alternatives are going to deal with some potential actions that have unpleasant consequences to the community. I think you just have to look in the store in Mandala Park to understand, sort of be reminded of the sensitivity towards this kind of stuff. And so I think it's, I think it's an important discussion, right? I guess I find myself gravitating back to the sort of the mayor's question and wondering, let's say we only had half this much money, how would we spend it?
Hey, Eric, we can't hear you. Just bring the microphone close.
Let's say we only had half this much money, how would we spend it?
I do, so, you know, I think the question comes down is, how do you make community meetings and have a continuity of discussion, given that you may have different people show up at the community meetings? And you may actually have different people show up depending on which grade crossing it is. I mean, if we're talking about all four of them, you'll get a different group than if you're saying, today we're talking about Churchill, or today we're talking about Meadow. People in those neighborhoods will come. And one of the questions I had, and I'm not sure how I feel about spending all that time, actually, but, you know, should the rail committee itself be at those community meetings as a noticed meeting?
Absolutely.
And we're the ones, you know, we're the ones that provide that, we are, if we provide the continuity in the conversation, that we are there the whole time, and that when we schedule these, you know, I think we need to notice it, and the four of us need to try and be there, and we need to provide that continuity. And I think that, I don't know, I wanted to throw that out there.
I think that's our job.
I was starting to think along those lines, and listening to Jim and to Gary, you know, looking at the schedules, like, well, what if we had three community meetings, which we all go to? And then we had a task force for the last three months that, and hopefully, we would recruit the task force from people that were active in the three community meetings, kind of get a sense of who is there and who was consistently part of the conversation.
So I'm not sold on any task force at all, to be honest. I think we should do that.
Yeah, so I really think that that final piece of continuity and evaluation of the alternatives that come up, if it's just the four of us, I think it's too disconnected from the community.
If I could jump in, I think we're going to have to adjust our strategy throughout this process. So I think if we have extremely low attendance, the first community workshop, we would come back to you and tell you that this is not working, and we need to rethink our strategy. And I think all through the process, we're going to have to continually check back in and give you an update on, do we think we're getting the right, the involvement from the right people? Are we having continuity? Are we telling the story correctly? So I think, you know, this is, I don't think we can assume that we're going to set the entire process at this point in time. We can create a general framework, but I do think we're going to revise this throughout the nine-month, nine-to-ten-month process.
Adrian, did you have something? You know, this idea of telescoping up and down and having a large community meeting, and then having a smaller work group for certain issues, makes a lot of sense to me. And I'm just concerned that this is just, you know, three or four large meetings. So I, you know.
So first of all, we're, if we were to think about the stages itself, okay, so this is saying, this next quarter, which is basically the second quarter of the year, would be focused on the, basically, the problem definition and evaluation framework. So the, one of the questions gets to be whether or not the design of the whole process beyond the workshops, the workshop, needs to be done now, or if that's something that can grow out of that stage, you know, based on what you see. I want to give you a couple, I mean, I've been doing this for 40 years. I've been on like a zillion task forces, and trying to think about which ones work successfully, citizens advisory committees, and which ones do less so. And I think that there's, I think a few points I would make are, I'll try to say it carefully, because I don't want to have anything I say and sound negative, because there's a really clear value, but number one, elected representatives appointing a task force can be done to provide political cover at times for decisions. It can be done to expand, as Gary said, the representative government role. So in one sense, you guys are four people, the council's nine people, you expand, in one sense, you are sort of delegating some of your representative, not your direct democracy, your representative response there in some way to get that. Now, to do that effectively usually involves that almost any design on a task force like that expands and takes more time than the original plan for what it will take. I mean, even on something as simple as the, I don't want to say simple, the infrastructure plan, where we had a defined problem, we had it quantified, and we said, let's just put together a task force to work on that, to propose how we could fund it and what we should do. I'm trying to remember what it was. I mean, we had ultimately five staff people supporting for an 18-month period, a process that broke into subcommittees for them, didn't even need to be able to do their part. I can't remember what, we had 30-some meetings, all sorts of follow-up. So the ability to stay on track also is something that you need to be careful about, too. And so I do think at most, you know, I think it makes sense, is there some telescoping in some way to deal with it, but I really don't see, and here's the other thing, which is always true, which is ultimately, the representative role comes back to the city council. And there, it doesn't matter whether there's any representative group you appoint, they also then sort of become sort of insiders over time. And you, that doesn't mean they even all reach agreement. And so the decision ultimately has to come back to you guys to be the ones to make the choices. So I would just say that if you could keep the fact that you are going to have to make some challenging choices, this is about having, you know, the community really understand the trade-offs, and how do you get to that in a meaningful period of time? I think that will be really important. And I do think that the committee meetings, the interface with the other outside parties is going to be key, because we're not doing this in a vacuum. I mean, we're going to need what VTA does, or what Caltrain's going to be informing us and telling us what to do. And you want to ultimately have the council make a decision when, before the sands and the hourglass have run out on some of our options as far as funding and things.
So we're almost an hour in. If it's a good time, I thought maybe if there's any members of the public that want to speak, you should get your cards in. I have one speaker right now, which is Adina Levin.
the word out and working with CARD and others as appropriate. I want to just toss in one fairly narrow thing into the discussion based on Mandala Park City Council's discussion last night about grade separation options for Ravenswood and potentially a couple of other streets. And there was a lot of discussion with a lot of heat and less light than would have been ideal about the topic of passing tracks, which is something that is, you know, causes concern and consternation, and is also really related to the potential effectiveness of Caltrain as a transportation system for the coming decades. And so we'd just like to encourage, so it's going to be mentioned, and it should be included in the curriculum here somewhere regarding that topic, so that people understand it, and so that people... understand it with regard to what the options and what the meaning is of all the options. And I guess, secondly, I would like to support what one of the council members mentioned in terms of the fleshing out of the financial section of this, which is not only a technical item about how you get it paid for, especially if it touches land use and it touches value capture, because that becomes really intimately involved with the city's, you know, land use decisions as it relates to the comp plan and implementing the comp plan, and these are very sensitive and strongly felt issues within the community. So I would recommend having that be, you know, not just here's, you know, we're going to bring in Deloitte and have them tell us that would not have the desired outcome, that needs to be baked into a community process to contemplate what the options are and what is preferable in terms of the trade-offs. Those are the two points. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, everyone. So I, I think, I mean, I'm hearing the consternation on both sides. On the one hand, how do we wrangle the beast of having as many people involved as possible? And on the other hand, how are we having some kind of subset of the community that helps in this sort of shared decision-making process? I don't, I'm still really unclear how you're able to have continuity of conversation if you don't have enough representatives of the citizens, you know, talking to the citizens more regularly than just having them attend meetings. I would say simply from a scheduling standpoint, so Card would be happy to certainly help in any presentations, but we'll have to talk to staff, because, for example, I'm out for at least a week now because of spring break. I'd also like to point out that, based on this schedule, most of the community meetings would be happening at about the time when everybody leaves for summer vacation. So if you're trying to get a big section of the community, that's probably not the ideal time. I know there's never a great time, but doing it in the middle of the summer is really not a great time. And it will, you know, our personal schedules at Card will probably also impact that schedule. So I'd just throw that out there. I do think we have to still keep our eye on the ball when it comes to the high-speed rail conversation, and we have to show more leadership, frankly, in how we deal with VTA and some of these other things. This idea that VTA will then tell us how money is being doled out and what happens, I don't need to tell you guys, the elected leaders, that we have direct influence on how that works. And we should be having the council members lobby whoever they can, whenever they can, about things like how Caltrain is involved, what's happening with high-speed rails, alternatives analysis, why are they looking at a third track, you know, does the third track make sense for Caltrain, but also the entire VTA process. That's it. Thank you.
And last speaker is Elizabeth Alexis.
Hi, good morning. So first, I want to, there's some good news. Just, I ran into some people this weekend who, without really prompting, gave some kudos to the city, talking about our grade crossings. And they were not talking about the fact that we can go over or under ones that we didn't used to be able to, because we obviously have not done that. But they were talking about the lead that the city has taken on some of the safety issues around the crossings. And not only do they appreciate the actual safety measures, but they appreciate that the city just sort of stood up at some point and said, we're not going to sit back and wait for people to help us, like, we are going to, we're going to take an affirmative lead. And that sort of pushes me into kind of the, like, we're talking a lot about the details and engagement here, but I think we need to step back for a moment, and, you know, what are we, what are we doing here? And I think that leads to how we do it. I mean, this is a program about, I call it sort of Palo Alto Connections Program, like, how do we connect the city? How do we make that safe? How do we look to the future here? And in doing that, I mean, I think we're all afraid to, you know, get into some five-year process, but the, the point of CSS is that that's supposed to help you avoid that by making this very structured decision process. So, I mean, I think we see the role for both, I mean, I think a minimum of four community meetings. I mean, I think on that side, I think the city is actually underestimating it, and therefore, a couple of reasons, so you have to identify. I mean, the first one is just this awareness, like, you get, that's a chance to flyer and invite everybody, and this is going on, and this is happening. The second one is part of kind of a EIR process, which is the scoping process, which is to make sure that we know about all the things that are going on, right? And then the third one is important, because this is part of the structured decision-making process, which is that, you know, I look back at successful processes in Palo Alto, and I think the library program to reinvigorate all the libraries was, was one of them. And one of the first decisions that got made, and maybe wasn't so explicit, was, do we do one big library like Menlo Park, or do we really stick to the system of five local ones? And that decision was made in a series of different ways. I mean, I think there was a survey, it was made through the Library Advisory Commission, there were public meetings, and this, the council, can I, okay, was able to come to this consensus. It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, apps, everybody in the city was there, but it was a first decision, which then allowed you to move forward and make other decisions, and then later on, oh my God, why are we doing five? Well, because we went through this thing. And so I think these, these meetings are really important to go in, and there may be decisions that have to be verified. Like, we have assumptions about eminent domain, for instance, right? Like, so there are people who feel very strongly we can't have any, or there's some who, why would you take that off the table, or whatever. And people don't even know all the rules in this. I mean, I hear all sorts of crazy things. So one important role would be, like, to go and talk to people, like, what do you think about this? Like, is this something that's an absolute? Is this a trade-off? Is this, where is this? And that would be, but in order to even know to ask that question, you have to have a group together, which is thinking about, I mean, one of the most important roles, I think, of a, we'll call it a technical advisory group, and we can talk for a second what that would, maybe we can expand what that is. But they have to think about these questions, right? They have to sit down and think about, what are the things that we need to decide before we move to the next step? Because if this is an, if this is a deal killer, we shouldn't consider any, this is the, you know, we should do that. And you don't even know the questions to go to the community and check in until you have that. So in looking at the technical advisory group, I mean, I think, I think it should have community members, and I think you guys could be on it, but I think it has to be more than just you guys, because you guys are specifically, you don't represent districts, you represent the whole city. Well, you need some people on there who are really like, well, wait a minute, in my neighborhood, blah, 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 right? And you need both of those kinds of things. And I know it's hard to do that, and how do you appoint those? I mean, I actually think it's going to be more recruiting, because there's going to be a lot of meetings you have to go to, and you have to do some other things. But, but we need a team. I mean, there has to be a team with people's names on it, who are, whose names are next to the evaluate, when you finalize these evaluation criteria, whose names are there, so that when they go back and assess it against the criteria, like, they made the criteria. The final thing is just, yes, I think it has to come to council, but the council at some point is going to have to get comfortable and trust this process, so that when it comes to council, it doesn't all get thrown out again. And that's what, it's this process upfront. It's hard, but I think it's worth it.
Okay. Can I just say one thing, Mr. Chair? I don't, I don't think we want to lose sight of the fact of what Josh tried to do here, which is, one, to acknowledge that, that our staff team, who, to be honest, is the most fundamental component to our ability to support this process, beyond the consultants or whatever, I mean, they're the real interface between the council and, and whoever else we, we bring on, endorsed and agree with the outline for the CSS process that was presented at the last meeting, and also acknowledge that having a, this period of time where the problem definition is, is explored without pre-imposition of solutions or alternatives from us, and that that would take place over this next three months, that's what we need to get an okay for, to get going. In truth, even the conversation that I've been either contributing to, helping or misdirecting here, can, in my view, can happen in parallel to us getting the okay and proceeding in this phase here. And I'd just like to ask you to think about that, because I know Josh is...
So what exactly do you want us to do today? I was going to ask that question. So you want us to approve what? What are you asking for?
We would like to start work on stage one, which is shown on the task five schedule.
So it's the stuff in blue, that's what you want approval for today?
Yes. So we have, we have a hold on Mitchell Park Community Center for...
May 5th?
Thirteenth and 20th.
May 13th and 20th. So our goal would be to try to do it before school is out.
You want to do a community meeting on May 13th?
That would be the goal, is to, one of those dates.
One of those?
One of those dates. They're both Saturdays. And it would be an all-day forum that would, you know, tackle the things that are shown in the dark blue there, establish the project, the program background, give people a little bit of history on the rail corridor, talk about the planning work and the design work and feasibility study that was done previously, look at what other communities are doing. And then Nadia had a really great idea that we look at our existing grade crossings and grade separations, do kind of a visual walkthrough. I don't think we could have an actual walkthrough, because we'd have to bust people from the site, but I think we could do a visual kind of survey and overview, and get people's opinion on what works and doesn't work at the current, the existing grade crossings, and then the existing grade separations at Embarcadero in Oregon. And then the second half of that meeting would be working on the problem definition. So what is the problem we are trying to solve? We haven't really talked about that in detail. And then finally, we would start to develop the evaluation criteria. The evaluation criteria would also include a discussion of who's going to make the decisions, and who's going to evaluate the alternatives, and how that will work. And then we would come back to the rail committee after that. But we would also be discussing this throughout the three-month process with the rail committee as we got up to that community meeting. And it, I think it would be great for the rail committee to host that community forum, and for all of you to be able to attend.
So we should look at our calendars for the May 13th to May 20th, right? That'd be like the first step.
So you're saying it's three months, but there's one meeting. What else, what else happens in those three months to help us to find the problem?
Well, April would be planning for the meeting, making sure we get all the outreach, necessary outreach done. There would also be kind of the finalization of the, the community engagement plan, which is that high-level kind of look at resources that we'd allocate to community engagement. We do interviews, strategic interviews with, probably with, you know, neighborhoods immediately abutting the rail corridor, just kind of introductory interviews with Caltrain and the CPUC, and some of the people that could potentially sit on the technical group. April would be spent working, you know, intensively with Card and PPS, and the program team to develop the programming for that community meeting. And then, you know, half of May and June would be distilling what we heard from the community meeting, and then preparing materials to return to the rail committee and city council for the endorsement of the problem definition and the evaluation criteria.
Thanks, Chair. So, I mean, I would be comfortable endorsing most of this today. I have two questions, one recommendation. So one, can you give us a bit of an idea of how the TAC relates to this and what their role is? Are they, you know, working on defining the problem in parallel, or are they kind of using, providing technical parameters that are in, in field or not?
So the TAC, you know, who's on the TAC and what it looks like would directly depend on the problem definition and the evaluation criteria, because we don't know what the problem that we're going to be trying to solve is. We think we do. But our initial kind of idea about the TAC is it would be folks like Card, Friends of Caltrain, the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board, VTA, the CPUC, the Public Utilities Commission. We'd like to try to get UP on, but they're very difficult to get reach out to. So this would be a group of professional and advocates who are very familiar with rail design and rail operation and roadway operation, and they would serve as the, kind of the reality check as alternatives are developed, and will this work technically? Is this, you know, potentially financeable through existing resources, those kind of things.
So I think that could be a helpful role. What I was a little worried about is when you said, after we have the problem definition, that's when we choose the TAC. I worry about starting this like circular process within a process, if the TAC is going to be defined by the community workshops and the problem definition they've put forward, is that helpful? Or should it be a parallel track, or should it not exist at all, actually?
I think it would be somewhat of a parallel track. I think we could start to coalesce the technical advisory committee, but we wouldn't know who we actually really needed on until we had the problem definition and the evaluation.
Okay. And so, and the comment to my colleagues is, if we do go ahead and endorse this, or some, some form of this, I think it's incumbent on us to kind of stick with that process, support it as much as we can, and then not go adding other processes, whether it's a task force, the citizens advisory committee, and other working group. I think it is important, given the time crunch here, and our Palo Alto process, that we kind of stick to something.
So I'd, I'd support that, too, for the most part. I'm a little stuck on this problem definition as well, though. Like, I don't understand why staff hasn't defined the problem. Like, what do you mean, we don't know what the problem is? I mean, what do you, I mean, I'm not, I don't mean that in a negative way. I just, I mean, the problem is, is we need grade separations, or some way to traverse the east-west. I mean, like, how else would you define the problem? Give me different alternatives in your mind of how you would define the problem.
So I'll let Gary kind of build off this. If you're, Gary, if you're still there, I'd love for you to jump in after this. Okay. I see it playing out as a much more detailed problem definition, like, you know, this is very, you know, the back of the envelope. Churchill Avenue grade crossing experiences X number of collisions per year. With the introduction of 20 additional trains, we anticipate that it'll experience Y number of collisions. There'd be a series of kind of problem definitions for each of our existing grade crossings. And then, you know, there's probably, you know, we all know there's definitely a problem around circulation as a whole within the city when those grade crossings start to be down more often. So I think it'd be a much more detailed, you know, we all think we know what the problem is, but this would be quantifying what the actual problem is with numbers and data.
Okay, so that's helpful. That's very helpful.
Yeah, and it's Gary. I think that's a part of it. I think the other part of it is that you, you want to create a shared perception of the problem, right? The city of Palo Alto. In fact, my guess is that if each of you were in that room there now, were to write down what the problem is, you'd probably come up with 10 or 12 different variations of it. And so what you, and the same goes with the community. So what you want to do is create a, a shared perception before you move ahead, because you might, you might have one problem in your head, and the community might have another. So that's one thought. And then let me just extemporaneously talk about what a problem definition could be. And that is, it's not that you need grade separations, it's that, that, you know, evidence points to the fact that you need them, but the problem is, Caltrain has told you, you're on your own, you gotta, right? They're not going to do it, they're not going to do all of them, they're not going to do any of them. You have to find your own money. And then part of the problem is, money is limited, you're limited to, what was that, 700 million? That, that is, that has been allocated, that the problem is that there's three other communities that also have issues, there's not enough money to go around. The problem, part of the problem is, you've got a deadline, right? That if, in fact, we are, Palo Alto is not ready to make its case for at least one of the grade separations to go first, then you, you might go back to ground zero. So, I mean, I think those, to me, are where you've got to get a shared perception with your, your community on.
So, it does. So you're looking for us to move forward on, so would it be a motion to me to move forward for the stuff in blue? Is that, is that really what you're looking for?
Stage one, which is shown in blue.
So what do we say is, the motion is for the rail committee to authorize you to move forward with stage one? Right? All right, I'll make that motion.
Can I just, can I just say that there are going to be things within this that obviously need more detail developed? But we do have one suggestion right now specifically, which would be good if we do settle on this, would be the date for this workshop, you know what I mean? We, since we've identified those.
I'd like to make some more comments first.
Well, I made a motion, if I have a second.
So, you know, looking at this thing about the project context, you know, the other thing I would add, and I'm sure it's going to come with the community, is just noise and environmental impact. And so if you could work that in. Another question for Gary. Gary, do you have an example of structures that you've seen on other large infrastructure projects in terms of community engagement and this telescoping idea?
Well, yeah, it's mostly the citizens advisory committee. But is Scott in the room?
No.
All right. Well, I'm sure a circle point, that's what they do for a living. That's what, right? They do it 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year. I mean, the definition, there's no one fixed definition of the citizens advisory committee, so, I mean, I guess I don't know that I can give you one and say, this is, this is it.
Okay. So... So I do have a little disagreement, I think, with what Adrian said, because, you know, locking onto the process right now, I think it would be a mistake. And I thought what we were hearing in the conversation was, is we should, we should go through this and be flexible, and if we see it's not working, you know, we need to adjust. And what I'd propose is, after the May workshop, we would involve PPS in evaluating the community feedback and maybe get a recommendation about community engagement and see how that's going. You know, the, the part I'm still concerned about with just workshops is, we developed this evaluation criteria, and then we have a third workshop where, where people evaluate options, and it's not clear to me, again, if it's a new group of people, how they're gonna be able to do that. And so I would like to keep on the table that when we get through multiple workshops and we get down to that final couple of month stretch, that we might, again, consider a task force. And it may become really clear that there are a handful of people that have been very active in these community meetings, went to all of them, and we, we would value their input.
So let me just speak then to what the motion was.
Yep.
I wasn't taking anything off the table, I was just saying, on this stuff in blue.
Yep.
Let's go do this. And I, I agree, let's evaluate how our community workshop went, I mean-
Yeah. Well, I'm saying specifically, let's involve PPS in June after the May workshop.
So, so you wanna, so, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, I'm just saying, oh, we're gonna have another rail committee before meeting, right? So, I mean, I thought we'd authorize this, we'd have another rail committee. Do you want to add something to this? Is that, do you want-
Well, yeah.
Do you want to say, let's, let's make that decision to add PPS now? I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I would, I sort of want to hear from staff on that.
So PPS will be involved in the planning for the community workshop, so we can certainly bring them when we update you on the outcome and the feedback that we got on the workshop.
And PPS is very top, right?
Yeah, I'm talking about after the workshop, right?
Yeah, and can I, I just want to add to this, that the community workshops really are, particularly this first stage, is the fastest way to get it out in public and have some scale and scope, even if, even if it's disappointing, the results, that shows us something. And I recognize that, that, that that can't stand on its own, so what we're really saying is, is that we would work with, CSS would work with us along with Circle Point to design what, what the next structures or processes would be that could link things together. We actually have some, I think, interesting ideas on our staff about that, that would be different than, than usual, but would be a way to potentially link people through the process. I just think one thing we want to keep in mind is that there will be, there will be, well, let me just leave it at that. We're supportive of that, and I just think that we should think about some fresh ways of doing this. For example, there may, may be, we may learn a lot by who shows up at the community workshop, both as far as identifying people. There may be ways that people have a general interest, some people may have some specific interests or expertise, where maybe some way to enlist people there in even some different ways that are, whether you got a power user who wants to be involved versus somebody occasionally. I mean, I think we need to think about this as a campaign in some ways, and not just sort of come together for a meeting.
Yeah. And it's only a month away, so I think today's the day to decide not to put this up to another meeting. The other thing, again, if we're talking about the next three months, is, I'd really like to see a, a better layout of meeting schedule, particularly the TAC meetings. Again, if we're gonna involve agencies and things, I think we need to put a schedule out there and start to get on people's calendars. And, and I think we talked about this last time, but there may be some groups that aren't necessarily part of the TAC but are invited to certain meetings, and maybe that's the way we should think about Union Pacific, like, pick one or two specific meetings and really ask them to go to, to those particular meetings. But again, this is an aggressive time schedule, so hopefully by next rail meeting, we would have a more definitive schedule. And then the last part of this is, again, back to the budget. If we do this community workshop, we evaluate the feedback and we decide that we do want to try some other things, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're gonna run out of money when we get to the end, we're gonna be locked in. And so I, I don't want to see us get locked into a plan that's not working the way we want it to work. And so in terms of the motion, again, I would just, I would ask that we involve PPS in evaluating the feedback in June, and that we get a TAC meeting schedule put together.
That sounds reasonable to me. Does staff have any concerns with that?
Well, yeah, no, I mean, yeah. Obviously, we would be doing the work on the TAC and going back. I mean, we don't need your direction to do that, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, but it's very clear that you're identifying that that's important and we will report to you.
Again, this is a schedule we've been presenting, there's three meetings on here.
No, I know, but it's, this was generated in the past 10 days, I'm just saying, that's all.
I'm just saying that there's a mismatch.
Yeah, we'll do it.
So, thank you. Any other comments, Eric? Okay.
I can't do the 14th.
So let's do the 20th then. I think I could do both.
I can do both, is it, I can't do the 20th in the afternoon, late afternoon.
So when are we gonna start the meeting? When do you need to leave?
I think I have to leave like 3:00.
So I have a Red Sox game to go to that evening. But that's not till 4:00. Yeah, we can do, we'll do just before lunch and then right after lunch, so we'll break around like 2:00 o'clock if that works.
Yeah. Good, 2:00 is better.
10:00 to 2:00?
Like 10:00 to 2:00, yeah. Two hours in the morning and then we'll have a lunch and then two hours after.
We don't want to keep people too long, I think that-
No one wants to stay that long.
How is this gonna be promoted?
By all means necessary. I think we'll, I'll be knocking on doors, you know, at houses along the rail corridor personally, and we'll do some very intensive outreach to get people to turn out.
So what are you gonna do with all four rail crossings?
Yeah, we start at the high level, and then we may end up zooming in as we move along, but that'll be determined by the problem definition and prioritization.
So you should definitely send it to, at least notices, to everyone who's within 500 feet, right, of rail crossing. I mean, I, I think that's really important.
Wider, I mean, that's fine, I was just seeing that as a minimum. I mean, but- Maybe along the rail corridor.
All right. 2,000 feet, I don't know, figure it out.
A half mile, yeah, who knows?
Okay, so I don't know if we want to, we can vote on the motion. Does it favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Put out an invitation that says, don't get railroaded into a future you don't want, so-
That's pretty funny.
So have some fun with it.
Hey, guys, I wonder if I can offer an additional observation, or it's one that we've talked about before. It's gonna be, I, I know you know this, in, in recognition of the fact that it's gonna be really important to be transparent with your stakeholders, your citizens, one thing that I might put out there early in however you first contact the community, is that you're, you know you need to engage them, you're struggling to figure out the exact form of the bullets, conversations that's gone on today, previous to today, about citizens advisory committee or not, will that complicate things, will that take too long? And, you know, you might just, before they catch wind of the fact that somebody's organizing a technical advisory committee, and you might create the perception that, there they go again, they're, they're, they're off with their, you know, and they just, and so, so, yeah, figure out some way, I think, to let everybody know upfront, and maybe even during those interviews that somebody described before as the first part of this process, you point out that we want to solicit your input as a community, how do we best do this? Because we are worried about losing access to that money.
Okay. And we could quickly talk about agendas, upcoming meetings. So I thought last time we had said we wanted to meet every two weeks, do we actually want the rail committee to continue to meet every two weeks? And will staff be able to support that?
Yeah, as I say, do we, we didn't agree to that, did we?
I thought we did.
I think there'll be periods where we may need you to meet more frequently, but I don't think we're at that point yet. And I do think the next meeting, we may need to talk about high-speed rail and the scoping process for the environmental, so I would recommend that that be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, so right now, we were saying we're gonna go back to monthly, but the next meeting's two weeks away from today, essentially.
Yeah, let's do that, and maybe we treat it like the council is, I mean, each check-in or whatever, or what, through the chair, if we need a special meeting at a two-week interval, we, we'll do that.
It gets a little rough, though. I mean, we can try, but-
We need to agendize that letter, whatever you want to talk about.
Yeah, so the other thing was that the LP MG meeting last week, or two weeks ago now, the cities agreed that they wanted to send a letter into Union Pacific, and it's being worked on, so it's just a heads-up to staff that that would be coming in, and then I guess we want to agendize it on the next rail committee meeting. Hopefully we'll have a draft that we could approve at that point. And this is to just basically ask that a third-party freight operator allow flexibility in, in grade changes. The other, the other item I wanted to bring up was, apparently Atherton's gotten a commitment on electrification to use the center poles, which are kind of less, less of a profile for the city, and also a commitment about tree cutting along the corridor. And I wanted to discuss whether we can get that same kind of agreement where we are on the electrification design through Palo Alto. And then you, you said, well, we'll likely have high-speed rail on the agenda as well, right? Great.
And can you maybe, at our next meeting, at least go through with us what you expect the community meeting, what the topics, what the agenda's gonna be, how the day's gonna look?
Okay, I guess with that, anything else?
So the next meeting is actually, you say, when the news goes?
April 19.
Wednesday, April 19?
I don't like it.
Adrian?
Sorry, what's that?
4/26.
So we're meeting Wednesday, April 19, today at AM, right?
19?
I don't have that on my calendar. I didn't either.
So 20 what?
26.
We have it on the 26th?
Yep.
Hold on. So that's three weeks. Yes, I have that on my calendar. That's good.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.